As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the work session to order for September 23rd, 2021, 5:00 PM, Thursday. The first item on the agenda is item number one, a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Call the roll.
Oh, that's right. I need to allow our two council members. Thank you. And I just, all right, there we go. All right. On September 17th, 2021, I received a request from Councilor Dole to participate remotely in the September 23rd, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a family member's medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Dole's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow Councilor Dole to remotely participate in the September 23rd, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, we have a second from Councilor Claffey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Councilor Dole, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
1,003 East Beverly Street, Stanton, Virginia.
All right. Thank you. Could everybody on council as well as the audience hear? Councilor Dole.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Welcome. All right, on September 21st, 2021, I received a request from Councilor Mead to participate remotely in the September 23rd, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Mead's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, I move to allow Councilor Mead to remotely participate in the September 23rd, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Councilor Claffey has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Councilor Mead, can you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
342 Sherwood Avenue, Stanton.
Thank you. Could everyone on the council as well as the audience hear? Councilor Mead.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Welcome. All right, now we can go on to a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented with, as to the regular meeting, or excuse me, just as printed. I apologize.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, Councilor Claffey has second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks, I wasn't present for the last meeting, so I just knew that I wouldn't be in the call.
Okay, so, Councilor Holmes will be abstaining from voting.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, if I can just clarify for, for Mr. Holmes, that this is not to approve the minutes, Mr. Holmes, this is to approve the agenda for this meeting.
That is correct. That is correct. Yeah, I can see, Mr. Blair was getting ready to grab that microphone. So, so you can participate. Welcome back. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is item number two, a report on disposition of surplus property. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil Traer, the city's chief finance officer, will present this item.
Welcome, Mr. Traer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of councils. The pleasure to be back this evening. Tonight, we are here to provide your annual surplus property sales report for FY 2021. On slide two, the sale surplus property is allowed as per ordinance 2015-05, which authorizes staff to dispose of surplus personal property which has been designated obsolete or as minimal value without specific council approval. To do so, all sales must meet the following criteria. One, the property must be designated as surplus in writing by the Director of Finance or designee. Two, it must be endorsed by the city manager or designee prior to auction. On slide three, ordinance 2015-05 calls specifically for the use of the GovDeals government surplus auction sales site to dispose of the city's surplus personal property to the highest bidder. GovDeals is the most widely used government auction website in the state of Virginia. There's over 240 localities throughout the Commonwealth and school divisions which use the services. GovDeals does charge a 12.5% commission, which can be absorbed by the locality, the purchaser, or split between the both. In 2019, the city of Stanton began passing the entire commission on to the purchaser. The current rate structure remains at 12.5% premium to the buyer and 0% to the city. On slide four, the ordinance further states that the finance department must report annually to council about the categories of property that has been disposed of. Slide four offers a year-on-year comparison of surplus activity between fiscal years 2020 and 2021. As can be seen, in FY 2020, we sold seven items for $17,813. We had one transfer from the city to the schools. In FY 21, we sold seven items for a total of $13,561, and we had three transfer items. Items transferred include a bookshelf from Booker T. Washington Center to Valley ASAP, a 1998 GMC truck and salt spreader from the Streets Department to Stanton City Schools, and a 1999 15-passenger van from the Office of Youth to Public Works. On slide five, we break out the categories of property sold in 2021. As can be seen, we had general equipment with two items being sold, a ground sweeper and a tamper. And with vehicles, we had five vehicles sold ranging in age between 11 and 22 years. And finally, we wrap up slide six. Since 2009, we have received over $394,000 in sales from the GovDeals auction website. And that's your 2021 report. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey.
You know, what is a whacker tamper?
I have a picture of it, if you'd like to see. It's a pretty rusted-out piece of equipment, and I did bring the original application. I can, I can pull that for you. I'm not exactly sure. Perhaps Mr. Johnston will be able to help me with, with a whacker tamper. Sir, come on up.
It's a WP 155 whacker.
Yes, it is.
$410.
A whacker tamper is used to compact materials when we're refilling a hole or a trench after a water pipe. It's essentially a motorized pogo stick that just pounds the ground again and again and again until we get the...
That kind of what you see, like, when they're doing paving, you see that little stand-up thing?
Right. It's for, for small areas, small patches, obviously, for, you know, straight, for repaving, you use the large rollers and the other. So it's something we can use when we're doing quick repairs. But it is a brute force instrument, and they do wear out very, very quickly. So, that one, again, I think, Phil's got the pictures, that one had lived a long and productive life. Well, thank you. I just saw that, it struck me funny.
Yeah, struck me funny as well.
Phil?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask, I apologize, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna ask a stupid question, because I, and Ms. Dole can probably say, that's a stupid question. But when we sell this kind of stuff, I mean, is it well so past the, the life use of the, is there, like, we could take it off, like, said, on, on taxes as far as depreciation, or we, it's well past that?
These things would be fully depreciated, and, and they're in pretty rough shape. We, we, we do scrutinize things pretty carefully, and, and if there's any question, we do call up the originating department and scrutinize it, and we always go to schools and other departments to see if they have use for it as well. These items are, are in pretty poor shape, so. And, and I had no idea what a whacker tamper was, so I was just gonna mention, mention tamper, because I didn't want, I had no idea what the whacker portion was.
Who would buy dilapidated whacker tamper?
Probably another government or Streets Department, yeah.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Councilor Claffey had his eye on it. Sorry, it's old.
Or tamper.
All right, are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, yes.
All right, so the next item is item three, a discussion and resolution of the council of the city of Stanton, appointing an interim clerk of council and authorizing the city manager to designate such person in certain circumstances. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have, on your regular meeting agenda this evening, a resolution to take some action necessary, given Ms. Zinni's resignation, which is effective October 8th. So the, the resolution that you have in your materials accomplishes three things. First of all, it provides for the appointment of Morgan Smith as the interim clerk of council effective as of October 9th, which is the day following the effective date of Ms. Zinni's resignation. Secondly, it provides authorization for me and my capacity as city manager to increase Ms. Smith's salary in an amount equal to 10%, which is the same arrangement that we made when she last served in an interim capacity. And then finally, it also provides authorization for me to identify an individual other than Ms. Smith to serve as clerk to the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and other city boards and commissions. If, for example, Ms. Smith is unavailable to clerk for those bodies, really, what, what we did previously and what we're going to try to do again is limit Ms. Smith's role to clerking and supporting council. And, you know, we will ask other staff members, or perhaps Ms. Simmons, the prior clerk of council, to provide support to the other boards and commissions. And instead of coming back to you all every time, we ask a different individual to provide support to one of those other bodies, the resolution would provide me with the authority to designate one of those individuals to assist with one of those other boards or commissions. So again, this is in the form of a resolution, and it's included on your regular meeting agenda for consideration this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rosenberg? Okay, hearing none. As Mr. Rosenberg stated, this will be item B on the regular meeting agenda. All right, the next item under the work session is item four, discussion of ordinance amending section 2.30.010, appointment and general duties of chapter 2.30, city clerk of title two, administration of the Stanton City Code, authorizing the city manager upon consultation with the mayor to designate an acting clerk. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Blair will present this item.
Welcome, Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you heard in the immediately preceding item, you are going to consider tonight a resolution allowing the city manager to appoint an acting clerk for other boards and commissions of the city. At our, at the last council meeting, and then talking to Mr. Rosenberg and, and understanding the situation that you may find yourself in, tonight, or this evening, I've drafted a code amendment to the Stanton City Code, and it's, it's sort of interesting. I, apparently, there's not been a situation like this, but the way the code is currently written, clerk of council is your appointee, but if there was, for instance, a situation where the clerk was unable to clerk a planning commission meeting, or a board of zoning appeals meeting, or some other board and commission meeting, the proper legal process per the code would be to have a special meeting of council for council to appoint that person for, as an acting clerk for that commission meeting. What the proposed amendment does is provides, in those situations, not what we're talking about with an interim clerk, but just if you had a, a regular clerk, and let's say he or she called in and said, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sick, I can't be there, or they had a family emergency, this would allow the city manager, in consultation with the mayor, to appoint an acting clerk for one of those other boards and commissions for those clerking duties temporarily. And I would like to talk about, the reason there's a consultation with the mayor, is that, again, the clerk is your appointee as council. But in a situation like that, this, the city manager is going to be asked, hey, who can we find tonight to clerk for a meeting? And, and city manager will then look and talk to staff members and try to determine who can clerk for a meeting for that board or commission. But since it is your appointee as the council, the clerk of council is, that's why the consultation with the mayor language is in there. I can't imagine that there would be any conflict in something like this if it was a planning commission. The clerk couldn't be there, the city manager is probably going to know who to talk to on staff. The city manager would then give the mayor a call and say, this is what I'd like to do, and I, I would imagine the mayor would be like, sure, for tonight, that's fine. So this is really, it's, it's a legal cleanup to make that process legal, so that if the clerk can't be at one of those board or commission meetings, there's a provision in the code for temporarily appointing somebody for one meeting.
Are there any questions? Okay, so, we're not voting on this tonight.
I was going to say, correct, this will be on your next regular meeting agenda.
Okay, all right. Can we vote on it?
You could if you chose to amend your agenda.
Is there an urgency to vote on it? Between now and then, I hope not.
I don't believe so, because the, the resolution that was just discussed, if that's adopted tonight, there are those provisions in there temporarily. So this would be more of a permanent change in your code.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions?
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councilor Dole.
I'm curious, is there any reason not to go ahead and vote on it tonight? We seem to have a shorter agenda than sometimes, and we could, you know, because I'm always in favor of, as you said, legal cleanups, so, just curious.
Sure, if, if the councils, if it's your prerogative, you can make a motion to amend the agenda to add this as item C.
Did anyone want to make that motion?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Just in, for expediency, make a motion that we amend our regular meeting for item C and add the resolution for city council clerk.
The ordinance.
Or the ordinance, excuse me, ordinance for a city council clerk.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right.
Here, Holmes, second.
All right, Councilor Holmes, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blair.
We will tamper with the city code later tonight.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, number five on the agenda is a discussion of establishment of Equity and Diversity Commission. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, will present this item.
I have a little bit to say, so I'm gonna take this off. Okay. All right, so a council's meeting on August 12th, 2021, after discussion, council voted to proceed with establishment of a council-appointed commission for equity and diversity. So I'd like to start by highlighting a few points of the resolution, and I'll elaborate a bit more on the establishment, on the purpose of such commissions. So the first item is membership, and part of the resolution is city council will need to decide on the number of members to be appointed to the commission and the date by when members will be appointed. The resolution further states that the members will hold a diversity of backgrounds and perspectives and will serve for two years upon the date of their appointment. And council member Mead will serve as the liaison for this commission initially. There are a few things the resolution in front of you does not specifically address, but I'd like to just have us discuss these tonight. One is would council like to consider a requirement that members be residents of the city, or a portion of members be residents? Would council like to receive any public input as to the framework of the commission before you adopt such a resolution, including, for instance, the qualifications of members and also the charge of the commission, which I'll talk about shortly? And finally, would council like to have any supplemental questions for applicants in addition to the form that is already used for boards and commissions that would specifically address areas of equity and diversity? As far as the commission charge goes, that the resolution outlines, they will objectively evaluate existing data, studies, and reports from available sources concerning social and racial equity in the city that evaluate social determinants and inequitable outcomes within the city of Stanton. They'll also do their own data collection and research that evaluate the same outcomes. They'll hold at least one public hearing to receive input concerning racial and social equity, and they'll finally compile a report for council consisting of its analysis of existing data, studies, and reports concerning racial and social equity, as well as its own research and data collection, and a summary of all public comments received by the commission at its public hearings, as well as any other communications it receives. The report shall include recommendations to the council about specific inequitable social and racial outcomes within the city of Stanton, and for a proposed framework for the commission to pursue in the next 12 to 18 months to address specific factors. In essence, they'll develop a work plan. So I wanted to speak a little bit about what these commissions do normally, and there's a few other commissions that exist in Virginia. Generally, these commissions are established to study policies, practices, and service delivery models, both internal and external, and discover if they disproportionately discriminate against groups based on social, racial, or other factors. These commissions ask the question and aim to address how we do what we do and how we treat others in what we do. And of course, this would include a review of internal human resources policies and recruiting and hiring practices, but also looking at external-facing policies and practices such as police response, code enforcement, zoning practices, housing policies, human services delivery, small and minority business practices, et cetera, and that list is not exhaustive. Commissions also help government play a lead role in celebrating and enhancing the diversity of a community, for instance, providing educational opportunities and modeling the very behavior that helps our citizens and city staff overcome stereotypes about others, build cultural awareness, and discourage racism and encourage unity. So I'd just like to give you one example from the city of Roanoke. They have something called the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, and they just started this past January. And their, their goals are these, to review the priorities of interwoven equity in Plan 2040, which is their comprehensive plan, develop proposed plans for the implementation of policies and actions identified for each priority set forth in the city plan 2040, and to review all existing city policies and ordinances and regulations, and they recommend these to city council, any changes that need to be made. So to summarize, their charge is to ensure that all policies and plans in the city are reviewed, adopted, and implemented with the lens of equity always in the forefront. And their priorities include building community trust through actions of government, breaking the cycle of poverty, providing neighborhood choice, building an inclusive culture, and equitable service delivery, and they have action items underneath each of those priority areas. The town of Leesburg also has a diversity commission, and they make recommendations to the town council that enhance the town of Leesburg's government's ability to communicate with and deliver services more effectively to minority residents and business owners, and they make recommendations to the town council that provide the town of Leesburg with the opportunity to enhance and celebrate the town's diverse community. And they also work with the Economic Development Commission regarding outreach to minority business community. So these examples just show a variety of purpose of these types of commissions and the complexity of their charge and activities, and it might help inform this discussion going forward in the resolution before you tonight. So let me touch next on the budget, because this was also in the resolution. And the resolution, as it's written, asks city council to appropriate funds to the commission to commence their work. And I noted that expenditures might include memberships and organizations that focus on equity and diversity, training and development, materials, communications and marketing, community outreach, and data collection and research. And remember that they might be collecting their own data and doing their own research, just as a reminder. So I did do a quick poll of these commissions, and I'll have to say that they do not have discretionary budgets, which surprised me, actually. They do, so the city of Roanoke, their commission will be asking for funding in the next fiscal year. Leesburg has provided their board with funds on a case-by-case basis when money is available. It's not ideal, but it's conceivable that staff could figure out a way to pay for anything the commission might need, at least to get us through FY '22. But in FY '23, I would anticipate that staff would include a budget proposal for the commission. And I'll also note, and this just happened today, that staff participated in a webinar hosted by the Virginia Risk Sharing Association, and, and it's a first in the series of webinars they're doing on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And they did mention there could be, or there will, there are, excuse me, available grants through Versa for equity and diversity work, and so we'll be exploring that as well. Finally, for the report deadline, council will need to decide when the final report is due to council. A public hearing will be held to receive feedback about the report, and following these actions, city council will assign further duties to the commission to facilitate implementation of report recommendations. So, all that being said, there are several decisions we would like to go through with you tonight that I've already mentioned, but let me summarize here. Number of members of the commission, which is in section one, whether to require that all members or some members be Stanton residents. Would you like upfront public input as to the framework on the commission? Would you like to have supplemental questions for applicants in addition to what you already asked for boards and commissions? The date by which the initial members will be appointed, which is in section two, and the due date of the initial report to council in section six, and then a sense from council regarding the initial budget for the commission. And I'll make sure we get through all that, because I know it's a lot to remember. So I'm happy to answer any questions and take your feedback.
All right, Councilor Claffey.
I noticed that you arbitrarily, you used the word commission and advisory board interchangeably when you, particularly when you were referring to the other cities in Virginia. And I'd like to know what the difference between an advisory board is and a commission.
I think it's just what they're calling it. It's essentially the same thing. Their town council or city council has named those members. I think it's just what they're calling it. It's essentially the same thing. Their town council or city council has named those members, and they're just calling it an advisory board rather than a commission. I don't see any difference.
Let me ask our city attorney, is there a difference as to the responsibilities of what an advisory board would do versus a commission?
Councillor Claffey, to answer your question, no, there's not a difference. There are certain boards and commissions provided for in the Code of Virginia. For instance, you appoint a planning commission. You appoint a board of, well, you appoint a, not a board of zoning appeals, but you do appoint your economic development authority. And those duties and powers and obligations are spelled out in the Code of Virginia for a lot of those boards and commissions. This is going to be found under Virginia Code Section 15.2-1411. And that allows you to appoint a board or commission to advise you on issues, and that's the authority under which you would appoint this commission. So it, it, there is no difference in a board or commission. Under that particular statute, they are both, whether you designate this a board or a commission, they're both to advise the city council on issues.
The, recently, the library advisory board, which I'm council liaison, had an issue with their Zoom meetings, and they said that there was a distinction between the advisory board serving the library and the planning commission as far as meeting goes. So could you explain the difference of why there's a difference between the two when you get out into the field, and which one would be better served for this?
Well, that's a good question, and I believe, and Mr. Rosenberg, the library advisory board is set up to advise the city manager who has control over that particular operation. If it's an advisory board to advise the city manager, under the Freedom of Information Act, they are not treated the same as other public bodies, because public bodies have a different definition. But under the enabling legislation for this commission, which is 15.2-1411, this commission, if you choose to, to establish it, is to advise the city council, and so it would be subject to FOIA.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
This is Brenda Mead.
Councillor Mead.
I would, it may go without saying, but I would like to make sure that as we are thinking about this commission, we're thinking racial equity, gender and sexual orientation, disability. I think, I think we need to be sure we're thinking broadly about equity and diversity, and, and so I don't know whether it needs to be in the language of this resolution, or whether we can assume that, that we're all in agreement on that.
All right. No, I don't have a problem with that at all.
I reckon.
Nominate him, Vice Mayor Robertson.
That would be my next question, is just to make the assumption that the members of this commission, whatever we decide that that number should be, would be appointed by the nominations committee and then brought before the, the full council for approval. Is that correct?
That, that was the understanding, yes.
All right.
And then I asked the question earlier, you have your boards and commission, regular process, which has those questions. And then I asked another question, if you want, might want to have supplemental information on top of that, and that's completely up to you all, of course. So that was just one air thought, but it definitely would be going through the boards and the nominations committee.
So if I can elaborate on, on that just briefly, the, the online application for boards and commissions has certain questions. And they apply to anyone who's applying for a position, and the, and the possibility exists if you desired that applicants for this particular commission or board could be asked to submit responses to a series of supplemental questions that the nominations committee could then use to evaluate their qualification for service as a member of the board or commission. It could elicit additional information. Now, you could fairly ask, well, why not do that for other boards and commissions?
Well, he, this is what, and I, I'm, we have to, Mr. Blair, you go a straight, flat-up question, based on what Ms. Mead just said. Are we even in the realm of possibility on of something like that? Could we ask? Okay, are you black? Are you white? Are you Asian? Are you gay, straight? Can you ask those type of questions if you're on a diversity board commission? I mean, that's a, you know.
So to answer your question about asking people how they identify, certainly, this is, I, I can give you a legal answer. Now, I would look at Ms. Beauregard or others with more subject matter expertise. Can you legally ask somebody what their identity is? I, I will look into that, but I believe the answer is yes, you can, though they do not have to disclose it if they choose not to. Where that, and again, that's a legal answer. Again, no one is forced to disclose that, nor are you allowed to question it when it comes to employment law in terms of if somebody self-identifies as, as something, you, you're not allowed to question that. Now, I would turn to Ms. Beauregard, because I think there's a difference in legal what you can ask on an application versus what is a best practice. I'm not sure that is or isn't a best practice as to whether to ask somebody their identity.
So, can speak to this. So I have in front of me what the schools did, the city schools, when they were gaining applicants for their commission. They did ask, these are the questions they asked, please provide your gender identity, please provide your race. The supplemental questions they asked, which I was, we were speaking about earlier, included what skills, expertise, or characteristics do you have that would benefit the committee as it develops an equity plan? And again, this is from the city schools. Why are you interested in serving on the equity committee? And tell us what you know about Stanton City Schools' work concerning equity, diversity, and inclusion to date. So that's what the schools did. So they did ask, going back to that question, they did ask for gender identity and race in their initial just application that applicants completed. Now, I've not seen other applications, I will admit, and I'm sure that will be part of our next process in terms of, you know, if you all decide you want to do something beyond the boards and commissions, then we can, you know, look more into that, but this is what I had today to share.
May I ask, I know the, I know the number of members that I've got in mind. But may I ask how many members the school board has on their commission? Twenty?
That's a lot.
That's a whole lot more than I had in mind, but.
So I looked, I did a very, I'm sorry. And are they city residents?
Can you come on up?
I can hear what he's saying.
He's coming up.
He's, he's coming up, Ms. Mead.
Thank you.
I thought you all may ask that question. So it is 20 members, 10 connected to the school division as a teacher, student, parent, administrator, or alumni, and 10 Stanton citizens interested in equity work. That's the breakdown of what they did.
The 10 was, as in teacher, student, staff.
Alumni, so alumni of the school system.
And then 10 that are.
Residents, citizens of Stanton, that's correct.
This is Carolyn Dole.
Councillor Dole.
I, I have some questions, and I, I can, I can give you my two cents on, on your, the input that you need. I was looking at a number of seven, because, you know, a small group interaction, to be most effective, if you get, you get up in the teens and et cetera, you can.
Get unwieldy.
Less effective organization, so I, I could be okay with seven to nine. I think they should be residents of the city, because it's affecting city matters, whether it's city employees, the procedures of the government, or, or the, the city itself. I think it'd be great to have public input. I don't think we would need to have a, a meeting per se, but we could do an online, tell us what you think, and just gather like, like kind of a survey or something from the public in the formation of it. And I think there should be something supplemental to the generic application, but I would just couch it more like, you know, please write a, a, a description of why you're interested, and what is your area of expertise or experience that could contribute to this? And then let, let them just write something. The, the, I had a couple questions, and, and Ms. Mead already addressed one of them, is that equity and diversity should certainly include the elderly and disabled. And so, one way to, without being intrusive on people's lives, we could actually allocate certain members, you know, like, like we do with the tourism board, saying this person's, this position is a retail position, and this position is a hotel position. So we, we could look at that. I'm just throwing that out there.
Right, John Blair would like to say something.
Ms. Dole, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I do, I, that, that, and I noticed the schools did not ask that. Now, we cannot ask somebody their disability status on an application. Under the ADA, so.
Yes, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that this commission should address disability inequities, just like any racial or gender or anything else. I'm not saying that we'd ever ask. I, I don't know that we need to ask anybody anything, you know, other than let them explain why they're interested in this issue, and what, maybe what problems they see, how they would, what their area of experience or interests are. And just let them answer that in a generic situation. So the, you know, I, I think, my other question was, what authority do they have in terms of getting data from, from staff? Because I would think that they would want to know, for example, how many, for, for a certain position, how many applications do we get, broken down by male, female, by race, age, whatever, whatever we gather, so they can have some baseline that way. So that's kind of my, the dates, you know, I, I think you can't say we want it a month from now, because we won't have a commission created in a month. So I, I would be looking at, at least, at least six months before, at a minimum, before a report would be due. That's my, that's my thoughts.
Right, are there any comments? Anyone from the nominating committee?
Well, I, I, Ms. Dole threw it. I mean, I would, this councilman would be leaning toward that seven-figure, you know, I said. That was my thought too, when Ms. Dole said that. I said, you get up in that far, to me, it becomes too unwieldy, too many, you know, I think, and like I said, definitely a, an uneven number, simply because in case there happened to be a vote taken, you know, you don't, I mean, probably wouldn't, but I mean, you might end up in a tie, then what do you do? So, you know, definitely an uneven number, and I think seven is a, is, is a good, a good number. That's where I would vote on.
This is Carolyn Dole. It's always scary when Mark and I agree.
I know it, I know it.
I think I just felt the earth move.
As a member of the nominating committee, I, I would appreciate the additional questions being put out there ahead of time, so everybody's on the same wavelength.
I agree.
And therefore, we have consistency. So I, I think that would be a wonderful thing for the, the city staff to come up with, you know, five or six different criteria that they, and I'd be all in favor of that, and I like the number seven.
I like, this is Amy Darby. I like, I'm okay with seven. I, I do think it's important. For me, I would like it to be city residents. I agree with what councillor Dole said in regards to the questions and, and what councillor Claffey just interjected. I think that makes good sense, and, and I think as far as the timeline, I agree. Again, I think six months, I, I frankly think that's pretty quick.
I was sort of thinking it may take longer.
It may take longer, but I'm always good with, you know, let's, let's see what we can do and.
Let's get started.
And get started, so.
There's two dates we're looking for. One is by the day by which the committee will be in place, the commission will be in place, and then the report will be due some, the time after that. So I think that's the six month that's been brought up, although I agree that might not be enough time, because I looked back and it's, for instance, the Bike Ped Commission, when they started years ago, they took a year, nine months to a year to complete their work. And that was from the time they were named as the ad hoc committee at that time, so.
I reckon my first thought would have been, you know, we're, here we are, nearing the end of September. We've, we've got, you know, October, November. I, I was thinking more, let, let's, let's at least try to maybe have a seven members that we could present to council and list, let, let them start, but let's say December 1. I mean, that gives us two months, but we gotta get.
I'd be surprised if you.
I couldn't even do that. Okay, maybe first of the year then.
I'm thinking even, even January for more interviews, because I'm, I'm afraid that we're not going to have a whole lot of interview opportunities in November and December.
Absolutely.
And we have a clerk of the council position that's going to require.
Right, right, right.
Some priority. But I would think January would be a great month to be doing full-fledged interview, and we should be able to give you something by, a commission by February 1st.
Then have, and then six months after that, maybe a report.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that, is that a reasonable timeframe?
Six months?
No, I'm saying.
I think your timeframe is fine.
I'm trying to interview and get seven people on board in January.
That's fine.
And then after that, then six months past that for some kind of report. Is that doable?
People agree with six months?
Yes.
Okay.
Terry, you wanted to say something.
Yeah, it's a couple of things. One is like, so we won't have a report from them before we actually do the next budget.
That's right.
So about funding, we'll have to figure out some way to do that, and then with the first group of, on this committee, would they either have a three-year or a two-year?
Two-year.
Because you wouldn't want them all turning over at the same time.
Good point.
That's a good point.
You know, so I don't know if you would want them, you know, to have some of them serve three years the first term, and then after that, it would, it would straighten itself out, wouldn't it?
Good point.
And, and I also lean towards seven. I wouldn't be upset with nine, just because you have people missing meetings, and it really can, hard to have a quorum, if you've got anything less than seven. But I also don't want it to get real wieldy, too big either. I think it'd be.
I recommend starting with seven, and if we see a need to expand it, we can do so.
This is Brenda Mead. I, I'm a little concerned with, with seven. I realize that growing it past that much would be unwieldy and, and, and a challenge to manage and organize, but, but I'm concerned that with only seven members, we won't be able to achieve the kind of diversity that we need on this committee.
I just.
I was actually considering five to seven, so seven sounds to be, it sounds like that's the number.
We found with five, that that is.
Too small.
Well, no, that's why I said five to seven, so I'm, I'm good with seven.
There's no way to have a representative from each community.
Right.
That would probably be.
But seven, you feel?
Well, I'm, like I said, seven to nine.
I think seven is a number we can all agree on.
It sounds like the majority is seven.
Hey, can I just go through the list of questions?
Yes, please do.
So, number of members, I have him hearing seven.
Yes.
Whether to require that they're residents, I'm hearing yes.
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 I'm neutral. I'm neutral on that.
You're neutral. Okay. But this, do I have four yeses on that at least? Okay. I did have a question about upfront public input on the framework of the commission. What am I hearing on that?
I don't know that a public hearing is necessary, um, for the formation of this commission. Um, I would like for the commission itself to be able to have a public hearing.
Right.
Which they will. Um, but I, I do like the idea of allowing folks to have input through a survey.
And we would do that now.
Now.
And then final, and then get that feedback and bring that back to you all. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, let's start working on that now.
It would be.
I agree.
Like yesterday.
Uh, supplemental questions for applicants, I'm hearing yes.
Yes.
Staff will come up with those. Date by which the initial members will be appointed, I'm hearing, I guess the end of January to take their seats in February. And then once they're named and in place, they will present a report to council.
Six months from that.
By the six-month date. And since about a budget?
All right. I wanted to get into the discretionary funding thing and I was going to ask the city manager, how many boards and commissions have discretionary funding currently?
I can answer that. I did. So I, I did poll several of our boards and commissions, including Planning Commission, BZA, Recreation Library, um, Bike and Ped, and the answer is none of them. And I was surprised, again.
How about the Planning Commission?
Well, excuse me. They get money for training. When they have a new member come on board, there's a $500 training fee that includes travel. Then they budget maybe two or three a year. But in terms of other supplemental type training or other types of needs, there is no budget in place. Cheryl did mention, Ms. Wagner mentioned if she needed something for her tourism board, she might use her own budget. Um, but there's nothing in place in terms of discretionary budget for the, for the existing.
Can I recommend that we turn it back over to the city manager? And he is in charge of the discretionary funding that's needed to get this thing up and running.
But I also.
We don't need to come back to council.
Yeah, but I also heard that you said that we might look into an ARPA or one of the.
So the, uh, Virginia Rest, Risk Sharing Association.
Miss Grant.
Has identified they had some grant funds for the EI initiatives that we'll be looking into. So that's a possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we just heard that today. So.
That's.
That's certainly the promising. Okay. So we'll figure some, we'll figure out another method and hope maybe one of these grants will come through.
And, and you, you did say poverty was also part of the quality and diversity.
Um, I mentioned that in terms of what the city of Roanoke, their advisory board was looking at.
I think that should be in there too, because you know, a lot of, a lot of poor people just don't have much say. You don't know how things work, you know, and it might be a good thing to have, have, you know, they look into that because, well, a lot, for one thing, a lot of minorities are tend to be poor anyway. So, I mean, you know, and it just, uh, was, I think should be part of it, of the commission.
Okay. Um, Counselor Darby, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. I thought you had one earlier.
All right. I think.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Counselor Doll?
I, I have a question slash suggestion in, in terms of this, uh, process of, of creating this commission. I, I'm really interested myself in seeing who applies and what they might, how they might answer questions and whatever. And I wonder, can we just do this as a council? Because we're having to set up all the criteria anyway, like what it's gonna, who's gonna be on, how many is gonna be on it, et cetera. So I'm throwing that out there as a suggestion. And it might make it move quicker, um, if it's the full council.
Well, it would have to come through the council anyway for final approval.
I just think you, this is Brenda Mead. I, I think Carol's suggestion is a good one. Uh, we often don't get the opportunity to see or hear the answers, hear the answers to the applicant's questions. We have to sort of take a, a, a blind approach to, uh, to approving these nominations uh, from the nominations committee. I, I, I would like very much to be involved in the selection process.
And I think what makes this different is that we're creating this very important commission that has a lot of, uh, I believe, a lot of public interest in this. And so I think, um, you know, two heads are better than one. I think in this case, the whole council being involved may help us end up with a better product. Uh, and that would include, uh, selecting the initial commissioner.
My viewpoint on it is to go ahead and let the nominating committee do their job and then bring it before the council like they would with any board and commission. I feel that the nominating committee, especially with the additional questions, will have a slate that it will be worthy to bring before the council that will represent equality and diverse, diversity on the commission itself. And we, of course, as a council, do not have to approve it. We can always.
But how do we have any perspective on, on what the other alternatives might be?
Well, that's why. That's why you receive the information in advance before the meeting. Um, that was a change that we just recently made where this council is able to review all the applicants.
This is Carolyn Doll.
All we get are, is paper. We don't get the opportunity to have conversations.
Okay. Well, my viewpoint.
This is Carolyn Doll and my, my, my question is, what's the downside to just having, just for the initial, choosing of, uh, the initial members of the commission? What's the downside of having the entire council participate?
I think it can take, um, even longer. And I feel that it, it needs to go through the, um, nominating committee. I don't see there, that there's a downside for that.
Well, I'm not hearing a downside.
It will take even longer if it comes before the whole, um, council. Let's just let the nominating committee do their job.
Why, why would it be, take longer? I think it could be quicker.
What, what's the downside of letting the nominating committee do their job? Um, there is none. I mean, what, what's the?
There is a downside. The downside is that this is a new, brand-new, very important commission who can, who can do damage or do great things for our city.
Well, hasn't that been the case for all commissions and boards in the past?
But I'm familiar with how all those boards and commissions, I'm familiar with how they operate, what their duties are. This is a work in progress and I don't know why it should be a problem for the initial selection to be, the entire council be a part of that. And it doesn't require having.
The council will be a part of it. They will be a part of it.
Oh, from the get-go, from the, from when they get applications through the interviews and, and then we just vote on it.
I, I'm not in agreement. I feel that it should go through the nominating committee.
Carolyn, you and I, you and I have been agreeing more than we think here lately, but I, just, but what I, what I hear, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, but what I hear is that you're, you're not trusting us that we'll do a fair job. And I, I just, I don't know. That's what I hear. I mean, maybe I'm hearing it wrong, but that's what I'm hearing.
You're taking it wrong. What, what you're hearing is me expressing my interest in, in hearing from these people. And, and I would like, you know, we could have Zoom meetings. Just, you know, with, with, uh, various applicants and just talk to them. But, you know, I, I was just suggesting that in the hopes that we'd end with a better product.
Would they be, this is Terry Holmes. Uh, would it be a po- problem with maybe letting one of us sit in on some, on, not all of us be there on all the interviews, but maybe one of us could sit in too, just, just, just to hear what's going on.
That's currently available.
Yeah, you can.
Going on already.
Yeah, you can.
You just can't do that.
You just can't vote, but yeah, you can do that. I mean, Ms. Ms. Mead is pretty much, Brenda's been there pretty much every time.
And everyone's welcome to come to the nominating meeting.
I mean, the difference is I'm not permitted to ask questions. Nor, nor is my presence e- even acknowledged at those committee meetings. So, you know, I think there's a difference, uh, between, uh, being a fly on the wall and being a participant in the process.
Now, Brenda, I, I say hello to you every time. Now, come on.
I, I think that, I guess the, the one thing that I, I think could be, um, difficult is sometimes it's difficult to get the nominating committee's schedules to coincide in a timely manner to do the interviews. So I guess my only concern is how are we going to get all of us, especially, you know, we're at the end of September. We, we want to try to, you know, we've got some other business we need to do and finish up and try to get this done going into the holiday season and by January. That's the only issue that I see is I don't know if, if we're going to say that all of us are going to be involved, then all of us need to be involved. And it can't be, well, six of us can be there that day, but one of us can't be. It needs to be all of us. And so that's the part that I think might pose as a problem.
I, yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I think the, the, the three of us and Ms. Mead attending, I mean, we can, we can get this, this seven-member commission set up come, you know, and I think like I said, I think Amy's got a good point. It's just, it becomes trying to get everybody's schedule setting up. Uh, I think it is a little too much. I, I mean, that's just my take on it.
Counselor Claffey?
The, the other point I would like to make is when you are applying for a job, hey, the first thing we want to do is, is make the applicant welcome. Thank them for their service. But we don't want to make it into an inquisition where we have seven, seven members lined up, grilling them and questioning. We try to get the applicants to talk and, and tell us about themselves and what they're going to bring to the position. So I, I'm reluctant to jump into having the full council involved in an interview process. Now, if we want to bring them back for, you know, our final crew before we, before we bring it to a meeting, if you all want to meet them or something like that, I'd be, I'd be willing to do that. But I, I don't want to set up an inquisition with too many people in there, with an applicant. It's intimidating for the applicant.
Okay. All right. All right. So we need to, we really need to.
I apologize for miscalculating how long this great discussion would take. So I still have my retreat report, but I guess we can.
So, um,
Do that.
Before, before you move on, one final observation on this, for clarity of council members, what I understand is we're going to set up an online public input process to gather that input from the public before we finalize the resolution and then bring it back to you at a later date. So it won't be your next meeting because we're going to set up this public input process, get the input, see if that drives us to recommend further changes to the draft resolution. And then we will schedule it for your consideration at a subsequent meeting.
Yes, that is correct.
In terms of your schedule for this evening, and I, I, I do this with reluctance, you're now scheduled for your break.
Correct.
Then you have roll call, then we have a closed meeting. My suggestion is you take your break now. When you come back, we do the council retreat report. We then go to the closed meeting and we defer roll call to the regular meeting. And I know that that's not, I know that that's not preferred. We could do the retreat report during the regular meeting if you prefer that.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Mr. Blair.
Well, I, I think it probably, i- if, if you all want to make a motion and you don't, I, just to make a motion to move roll call to after item C at the regular meeting.
I, I, I want to be, I, I want to be very, very clear. I, it doesn't matter to me which item gets deferred, either the retreat report or roll call. Absolutely your choice.
I would prefer.
What it, what is?
It, it doesn't matter. I was just going to say the retreat. Um, I, I feel like that could get moved to the regular meeting.
Go ahead and do roll call after we get back from break.
And if we finish it quickly, then try to get it in the work session.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, in that case, um, we are on break until 6:20.
You're good.
We're good. Okay. So we need a motion, Mr. Blair?
Yes, if a counselor would like to make the motion to move the council retreat item from the work session agenda to make it item D on the regular agenda session.
Okay. All righty. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
All right. Um, Counselor Darby?
I, um, move to amend the regular meeting at work session and regular meeting agendas to have the uh, discussion of Stanton City Council Retreat Report moved to C on the regular meeting agenda.
Item D.
Item D.
Excuse me, D on the regular meeting agenda.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So that takes us to item number six. Roll call. Mr. Rosenberg. Uh, we'll go ahead and start the roll call. So are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. I'll start with, um, Counselor Mead.
I have nothing.
Okay. Counselor Claffey?
Uh, any updates on, uh, the, I mean, you know, the courthouse?
Uh, well, um, Mr. Claffey, as you know, uh, there are, uh, there's a matter related to the courts on the, uh, work session agenda following this item, uh, for a closed meeting. And so I don't have anything to share with council other than items to discuss in the closed meeting. Certainly the, uh, county has made a public announcement concerning the status of the project, uh, which I think was well-reported by the media and we too have, um, over the last week or so issued a media release and, um, those, uh, those releases, uh, each detail the fact that, um, the county was anticipating that the circuit court would enter an order requiring the county to show cause as to why it should not be required to make certain improvements to its judicial facilities. And because the city maintains a court in one of those county-owned facilities, the city too has been subjected to an order of the court also requiring that the city show cause as to why improvements shouldn't be made, um, should, should not be required to be made in the, um, in, in the facility in which the city maintains its juvenile and domestic relations district courts. Um, so, uh, that's all a, a matter of public information. Uh, releases, uh, issued by each of the two localities and um, I'll have more to share with council, as will Mr. Blair during your closed meeting.
Okay. Vice Mayor Robertson?
Steve, I just, I wanted just clarification. Tell me, because you know how I, just from a personal standpoint, how I'm against any kind of mandates. I don't like them. I don't, you know, but please explain to me, I was trying to read your email earlier, where we get or why. And I understand Mr. Blair was brought into the subject, wh- where do we get that authority or why does it have to happen? He knows why do we have to mandate all of our employees, you know, follow this? I, I just want an explanation. I just want to, you know.
Yes, sir. So, um, and so it is, uh, it, it is a mandate that is being imposed upon us. So there's really, we're not exercising any discretion as to whether to proceed in this manner or not. There's a workplace requirement that has been implemented statewide, um, through, you know, for simplicity purposes, the Virginia Department of Labor and Industry. And, um, and so we are simply implementing the requirement that has been imposed by the state, um, as a workplace protection matter in, in the same way that we're subject to all sorts of other regulations concerning workplace safety.
Okay.
Right. Counselor Darby?
Ms. Rosenberg, um, I know that, um, and I'm sure you're aware that in recent months, there's been ongoing work, I believe, from the gas, a gas company on Spring Hill Road. But as someone who travels Spring Hill Road a lot, as well as from hearing from neighbors and other folks, it's, it's terrible. uh, it's, it's terrible right now and really bad shape. And so what is the plan? Is there anything the city can do to help alleviate some of the, you know, the road conditions on Spring Hill Road?
So, um, we of course have, uh, received inquiries from some of you on this project previously, and I provided an update. By, by email, if I recall correctly, um, essentially, I, I think relating to you that we're waiting for the project to be, we have been waiting for the project to be completed. And at that point to evaluate, uh, the, the condition of the road and make decisions about, um, what we may require of Columbia Gas or what we may undertake ourselves, um, after the completion of the project in order to address those conditions. I'm going to look to, um, Mr. Johnston and ask him, am I recalling correctly that that, that that's our current posture?
That's, that's where we are today. We do have a, uh, sort of a placeholder in next year's paving plan. Uh, again, I'm not sure if, if we, if it, it's enough to do a wholesale repaving, uh, of Spring Hill. But we, we've given ourselves a little bit of wiggle room to see where we are. They're going to be paving right up to when the plants close in December. And at that point, we've got sort of a feel for where they are. The other wild card in that is they also have a very ambitious, uh, steel pipe replacement plan for next year. Uh, that is going to sort of move up into the Skymont area. And we want to make sure that we don't get out ahead of that. Uh, I, I will say that the experience with Spring Hill is really, uh, we, we have a much closer, we're monitoring them a lot closer than we have in the past just because of the volume of the work and, and where it is. And that should put us on a good, good posture to react, uh, next spring. But it is, uh, it is dynamic. They have got a lot on their plate between now and the end of the year.
Now, Ms. Darby, if there are specific issues that exist presently, we can take those up with Columbia Gas if we're made aware of them. So if there's a specific patch that, you know, has gone bad or, you know, there, there's something else related to the manner in which they're undertaking the project, then if we know the details, we can engage with them and try to seek a prompt resolution.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeff, weren't they required to patch the, the road themselves? Because I know when they did appear on Culture and, uh, and, and West Beverly, they, they would, I thought they were the ones that was patching the road.
Uh, they, they will, uh, they, they will patch it or their contractor, uh, will patch it. But, uh, you know, at, at, at a certain point, a, a road is patched enough where it needs to be repaved. It happens, it happens in every street in town. So we're just keeping an eye on to say, after this is over, has Spring Hill crossed that threshold or not? And so it's a little tough to gauge until we see their finished product.
I reckon the, the, the only one that, because I know there's a couple of places that they actually have big steel. Yeah, that they have, but, and so I'll slow down. The only bad part that's really is on the section up there below, used to be Lunsford's Market, Spring Hill Market. Around that area, coming down, going into town, there's that area, and it's literally like a washboard. And you, I'm, I'm, I'm driving like this trying to, because it just, I mean, it's really, really bumpy.
We'll, we'll, no, we're keeping an eye on it and we'll talk to the, to the gas company. But while they are, while they're still getting into the ground, uh, it's a little difficult to assess exactly where we're going to be.
Thank you. Alright, Counselor Holmes?
Well, um, I really just more like to talk about like, I, I just got back from Europe and, and, and I tell you, the way they handle inoculations and stuff like that, I think it's, it's great. I mean, you can't get into places without your vaccination cards. If you, if, if, if they have outside dining, you can do that. But inside dining, you have to have a vaccination and, and, uh, and they're, they're eighty-three percent vaccinated, whereas we're what, fifty-three percent or something like that right now? And, and I, I just think that it's, we should put out the strongest statement we can for people, we can't make nobody get vaccinated, but we should be, put out the strongest statement that we can as a body that the importance of getting vaccinated. Uh, I got my booster shot. I got it right before I went to Ireland. I was really, I was really happy and surprised that I got it. But you know, uh, if, if you work with the public a lot, you're really taking a lot of chances, you know? And I, I just, I just, I just wished everybody would, would get inoculated. And, you know, I mean, they're saying that ninety percent of the cases at, uh, at AMC right now are from people who haven't been vaccinated. Period, not vaccinated at all. And I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty scary when you think about it. And when I, when I left, I talked to, uh, one of the, the gentleman over at the hospital, and he was talking about the fact that they were already, the emergency room was pretty near full. And that was two, two weeks ago. And since then, I think the rates have gone up another eight or ten percent. So I just think it's real important as a body that we try to put out a statement to get people to get inoculated. And I mean, you know, we, we talked about a proclamation. I, I, I wish we would do that. I wish we would, would come out and do that.
Thank you. Counselor Dull?
Well, um, any, any questions I have or any, uh, concerns or questions that constituents contact me about? I are, I have already talked to Mr. Rosenberg about, and, um, so I, I will never have anything at the roll call because I don't want to make constituents wait that long to hear something.
Okay, alright, so now it's my turn. And Mr. Rosenberg, you can go ahead and take a deep breath of sigh of relief. I have no questions.
Very well, thank you.
I would like to just, um, for the citizens that may not understand what's going on with roll call, I would just like to read a statement. Roll call allows each council member an opportunity to bring forth matters for staff follow-up, either during the same meeting or at a future work session or regular meeting. If additional time is required to respond to a council member inquiry. Alright, with that, moving on to the next item, which is a closed meeting for one consultation with legal counsel for necessary legal related advice and discussion regarding the order to show cause concerning the Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Courts facilities. And two, discussion of possible acquisition of real property within the city. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mayor Oaks.
Um, Counselor Holmes?
I move to enter a closed meeting for one consulting with legal counsel for necessary legal related advice and discussions regarding the order to show clause that has been served on each council member concerning the Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court facilities located in the District Court Building at six East Johnson Street, Stanton, pursuant to Virginia Code Section two dash two dash three seven one one A, comma, eight, and discussion of possible acquisition of real property for a public purpose located within the city of Stanton. Where discussions and open, oh, I'm sorry, guys, I lost it there for a minute. Uh, where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bodies, the public body's bargaining position for negotiating strategic pursuance to Virginia Code Section two dash two dash three seven one one A three.
Thank you. You can blame the city attorney for that one.
Madam Mayor.
Alright, uh, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I get the easy part. I will second that.
Alright, so Vice Mayor Robertson is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. We are now in closed session.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Counselor Claffey has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. That concludes the work session meeting. We will be back for the regular meeting at seven thirty. This meeting is adjourned.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is the invocation moment of silence, and tonight is my turn. Um, we have a guest that will be, um, doing an invocation for us, and I wanted to let everyone know that if you would like to join in on the invocation, please feel free. If you choose not to, that is fine as well. Uh, it is your choice. Um, and I'd like to welcome the Reverend William A.J. Honey from Trinity Episcopal Church. Welcome.
Please, uh, pray, pray with me as you choose. Gracious and living God, God of abundance, who has made us in your image, we give you thanks for the many blessings of our lives, for this heritage that we share, for the freedoms that we enjoy, for the beauty and bounty of this valley. We give you thanks for those who have gone before us. And we pray that we would be good stewards of all that you've given us for those who will come after us. Please bless the proceedings here tonight, especially the decisions that are being made by these civic leaders. May they be good stewards and servants of all that you've given us. We pray that we would be strong and be of courage and that everything we do be done in love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend Honey. Um, alrighty, the next item is the mayor's report. And I have a proclamation to read concerning Trinity Episcopal Church. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, Trinity Episcopal Church, two hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. Whereas Trinity Episcopal Church on West Beverly Street, Stanton, Virginia, was established in seventeen forty-six when it was known as Augusta Parish and is one year older than the city of Stanton. And whereas three buildings have been built on the current site of the church, including the current sanctuary constructed in eighteen fifty-five with many additions and renovations throughout the years. And whereas the parish has been consistently involved with the community, of which it is an integral part, and has hosted community meetings, civic ensembles, and concerts, including the annual Stanton Music Festival. And whereas, over the years, Stanton mayors, council members, and other community members have been parish, or parish, um, excuse me, parishioners, excuse me. And whereas twenty twenty-one is the year of Trinity Episcopal Church's two hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. And there will be celebrations held with the entire community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that in recognition of the two hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of Trinity Episcopal Church, it does hereby acknowledge and celebrate the parish as well as its historical contributions and continuing service to the community adopted this twenty-third day of September, twenty twenty-one, Mayor Andrea W. Oaks. And it's my understanding, um, everybody just met the Reverend William A.J., as you like to be called, Honey, Dr. Richard Coleman, Ms. Graham Tate, Ms. Dee Dee Bumgarner, and Ms. Sugie Batten? Did I pronounce? Okay, alright, well, if, um, if you all would like to come to the podium, I have the proclamation to present.
I feel a little embarrassed to be doing this. I've only been here for eight months. It feels odd to show up and take credit for two hundred and seventy-five years. But one of the things that drew me to, uh, Trinity and drew me to Stanton was the place that Trinity has in the heart of the community. And I mean that geographically, um, I mean that I hope, um, not only spiritually, but also the, the life of, of the community. I was touched reading the sign out front about how Trinity has been involved from its very inception and indigent burials and taking care of orphans and widows. Uh, we do that, uh, because of our faith, but we do that as an integral part of this community. And we, we pledge not only to look back on the past two hundred and seventy-five years, but also to look forward. And we'll continue to do that work as a member of the community, not just for the community, but with the community. Not just a church in the, in the downtown, but a church for all of the town and all of its people. So thank you for your help. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the ways that you bring about taking care of all, all of Stanton's people.
Thank you.
We should also make sure we invite, there is a, we'll celebrate, uh, Sunday, October second. Our bishop will be in town. We'll have a worship service at ten fifteen, October third, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sunday, October third. But then following that, you're welcome to come to the worship. But following that, we'll have a catered outdoor reception on the lawn. So you're all welcome to that as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all coming.
And congratulations. Alright, uh, the next item is additional items by members of council. Um, are there any?
Madam.
Um, Counselor Claffey?
Hi, uh, last Thursday night, I attended the Friends of the, of the Library Advisory Board meeting. And the Friends of the Library have sent us an invitation today in our packets for the book sale. And I wanted to tell everybody in the city that this book fair sale will be set up on Monday, October the eleventh. And it's going to run from Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from nine to seven. And then on Friday morning, it's going to run for two hours, and then they're going to break it down by noon. So go by and check it out. It's going to be at the gym over in, uh, the park over there across from the stadium. And this is an integral part of the Friends of the Library fundraiser. They, they get a ton of books and they run through them, and they take the money and reinvest it in the library. So we really need your support. So please come out for the Friends of the Library Book Sale, October tenth through fourteenth, October twelfth through the fourteenth. Thank you.
The twelfth through the fourteenth. Alright, thank you. Alright, any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councilor Mead.
I have one item this evening, and I thought about bringing it up during roll call, but this is not a question that can be answered by staff. So, I'm going to bring it up now. It's a subject that's been, it's been a subject of many questions and comments from citizens over the past couple of weeks. The questions came up after a press release from Augusta County dated September 14th, 2021. And I'm going to quote directly from the second paragraph of the county's press release. Representatives from Augusta County met with representatives from Stanton to discuss the potential property acquisitions and the county's courthouse needs and limitations dictated by state code. The county made clear to representatives of Stanton, our constraints, which included a failed referendum, a process that cannot be held again until 2026, expansion limited to only the existing parcels adjacent to or across the street from the county seat, and concerns about Lewis Creek and its floodplain. Upon, and I still, this is still a quote directly from this press release, upon presenting the Circuit Courthouse expansion project to multiple city council members, they indicated general support for the project, which included demolition of smaller structures to provide a way for a newly renovated Circuit Courthouse and expansion for three court systems. So, citizens have been asking me and other members of council, which members of city council indicated their support for the demolition of these historic buildings? I don't have an answer for that. I had no part in those conversations. So, did I miss a city council meeting during which the demolition of historic buildings for the county courthouse was discussed and approved? Counselor Dull, did you attend a meeting in which general support for demolition of historic buildings was given the go-ahead by city council?
No, no, I didn't. In fact, my only communication about the destruction of historic buildings was when I wrote a letter on behalf of the city of Stanton, saying we would never allow historic structures to be demolished.
Counselor Holmes, were you present at a meeting when general support for Augusta County's project was agreed to by Stanton City Council?
No, it's never come up. That's, I don't think that's something that would come up in a meeting.
So, who? Who were these multiple city council members who indicated general support for the demolition of historic downtown Stanton buildings? This is a question that Stanton citizens deserve an answer to. So, I'm putting that question out to you tonight.
Well, since this is not a Q and A session, thank goodness, this council supported not having their downtown demolished and supporting to keep the courthouse in the city of Stanton's downtown area.
So, Mayor Oaks, you were not one of those.
Moving on, moving on, again, not a question and answer session. Any additional items by members of council? Because this council supported maintaining the historic integrity of our downtown, and thank God we did.
Yes, we did. After some members of the city council gave Augusta County the go-ahead to spend $100,000.
Councilmember Mead, we as a council decided to not demolish our city council. No, you're asking question and answers. This is not a Q and A, so that is out of order. Are there additional items?
And I will not ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I will say this. Augusta County was so sure that they had city council, Stanton City Council, in their pocket on this, that they paid $100,000 to purchase options on those buildings to demolish. And they paid for an elaborate plan to be prepared to submit to Historic Stanton Foundation. At some point in time, members of this city, the citizens of Stanton, need to know who those members of city council were.
There was no meeting, so there are no city council members that attended this meeting. Excuse me.
That is absolutely correct. There was no meeting.
There was no meeting. So, again, I'm so glad that this council chose to honor the historical buildings that we have in our downtown, and the integrity of the historic district, as well as maintaining the courthouse for Augusta County in downtown Stanton. Are there any additional items from members of council?
So, Augusta County's lying in their press releases.
I cannot speak on behalf of Augusta County. You would have to talk to a member of the Board of Supervisors. No, ma'am, please do not put words into my mouth. You'll have to speak to the Augusta County Board of Supervisors. But this council chose to preserve the historical buildings of downtown, and I'm very proud that the council did just that.
Yeah, after hundreds of citizens wrote letters, protested, you know, this council did not have a choice after Stanton citizens spoke their minds.
Counselor Mead, stop being rude. Just stop being rude. Enough is enough.
I want you to be honest. That's all.
Counselor Mead, that is out of order. That is inappropriate. Why so aggressive? This council approved to support keeping historical buildings in downtown intact, as well as the supporting the idea of keeping the courthouse and its functions for the Augusta County Circuit Court Building, the historical building in downtown. Now, I am moving on. I am moving on. Any additional items from other members of council?
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes.
I would just like to make sure that if you haven't had your inoculations, that you think about getting them, because the COVID cases have really jumped in our area, and our AMC is pretty close to being at capacity. So, if anybody hasn't got their vaccination, they ought to really think about it, because it doesn't only affect you, it affects every other person you come in contact with. And that means businesses, that means kids, that means everybody. So, I mean, it's just, it's real important that you think about getting the vaccination. We're only 53% vaccinated, which is pretty low for, I think, for our area. I would have thought it would have been much higher than that. But that's just a concern of mine.
All right, moving on to the approval of minutes.
This is Carolyn Dull.
Counselor Dull.
I had some items.
Okay.
First, I'd like to say I got a newsletter from Valley Supportive Housing. It's a little-known nonprofit in Stanton that does wonderful work and deserves to get more acknowledgement. But just to reference a few of the statistics in their newsletter, they're at capacity. And by the way, this group provides housing for those with mental illness, intellectual disability, or substance abuse issues. And so, they have 38 apartments that they have filled. The good news is they got a grant from the Virginia Department of Health and Community Development for their new Pump Street property. So, they've closed on that property, and they will be refurbishing the 35-year-old apartments in there. And I don't know if that's six, I think maybe it's six apartments in there. And they have 36 applicants on a waiting list. The local community services board had more than 60 individuals in the motel rooms until the state funding ran out. So, they've got a goal of getting a total of 50 units by the end of 2022. And they could fill 15 to 20 now. So, I would encourage anyone to support this great organization. They have a website, www, I think it's Valley Supportive Housing, all one word, dot org. But if you Google it, you'll come up with it. The other thing is, I would like to second Terry's comments on the COVID critical situation we're in. Augusta Health has canceled all elective procedures. So, those who are suffering from needing a hip replacement or a knee replacement, good luck, people, because you can't get in and have it done. They've canceled those because they don't have any space, as well as all the other procedures that happen, colonoscopies and diagnostic, they can't do any of these. All of their efforts are now in treating COVID patients in the hospital. They filled up the ICU. They have had to start using the outside morgue vehicle, truck, whatever it is. And they've never had to do that before. And of those COVID patients, 85% of them are not vaccinated. And so, with that in mind, I'd like to read this from Matthew. "Or what man is there of you whom, if his son asked for bread, will he give him a stone? Or if he asks a fish, will he give him a serpent? If you then, being evil, know how to give good gifts unto your children, how much more shall your Father, which is in heaven, give good things to them that ask him? Therefore, all things whatsoever ye would, that men should do to you, do you even so to them, for this is the law and the prophets." And I think this is a good time to take what is commonly known as the Golden Rule and think about it seriously, because I don't want to have to lose a family member, or a friend, or a neighbor, because people would not get vaccinated. So, I think people need to think long and hard about the Golden Rule, and do unto others as you would have them do to you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Right, hearing none, I'll now entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for the work session and regular meeting of September 9th, 2021.
Terry, do you have that? Because I don't have it.
You have to. Were you going to abstain? Counselor Claffey?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting of September 9th, 2021.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Darby.
I second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes.
Was not present at the last meeting, so I will.
Okay, all righty. Hearing no other discussion. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Stane.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So, the next item is a public hearing in consideration of a request by Kevin Pollard, KP's Cars LLC, to rezone 1906 West Beverly Street from R2 Low Density Residential District to B2 General Business District. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rodney Rhodes, the city senior planner, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Oaks. City council members, this is a rather straightforward rezoning request, I believe. As the mayor noted in the introduction, this is a request to rezone 1906 West Beverly Street from R2 Low Density Residential District to B2 General Business District, in order for the applicant to expand his car sales lot. The property has an existing dwelling that was declared unsanitary and uninhabitable in 2009, and has been vacant since that time. Actually, this property was zoned B2 General Business from at least 1969 to 2012, when the property was rezoned to Low Density Residential as part of the city's mass rezoning of properties, of non-conforming properties along West Beverly Street. It was the belief that this would be, continued to be used for residential purposes, as it had in the past. However, it has remained vacant since that time. And Mr. Pollard purchased this property at a public tax sale this past June, and now he is seeking this rezoning so he can redevelop this little portion of the West End. As far as the surrounding zoning, you'll note a lot of red and yellow. The red is commercial, the yellow is low-density residential. So, you got a combination there. However, you note that what fronts on Beverly Street, except for this 1906, for the most part, is zoned commercial and is used for commercial purposes. This slide shows the current sales lot in proximity to the proposed rezoning. And if you're like me, you've probably been by this 1,000 times and cannot quite picture that house. Well, this is the house that he would like to raise, and then to expand his business. Of course, he would need to go through the site plan process and do it in accordance with the city code requirements.
I picked up trash in front of that house with a trash pickup with the West End alliance.
I believe that picture is actually three years old.
Yeah.
As you guessed, it hasn't gotten any better.
Correct.
I want to point out that their front door is a piece of plywood, totally closing up. It's in bad shape.
I couldn't agree more. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August 19th, 2021. No one spoke in opposition to this rezoning request, and the commission unanimously, on a five-to-zero vote, recommended approval of the rezoning. I would note that we have not received any public comments regarding this proposed rezoning that has been advertised and also sent to all the adjoining property owners. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you have at this time, or after you conduct the public hearing. I actually do not see Mr. Pollard in attendance tonight.
All righty, are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. So, this is a public hearing. I'll bang the gavel. If you want to speak for or against this particular action item, come to the podium and state your name, your address. You have five minutes to speak, and we'll alternate between the audience and the Zoom callers. So, with that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone care to come to the podium to speak? Yes. Okay, all righty. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I don't have anyone with their hands raised. No.
Okay, all right. Last chance. Right, hearing from no one. The public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Dull.
Counselor Claffey.
I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the rezoning as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
I second.
Counselor Darby has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you. The next item is item B, a consideration of resolution of the council of the city of Stanton appointing an interim clerk of council and authorizing the city manager to designate such person in certain circumstances. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to pass a quickly revised draft of the resolution that's on the agenda for consideration. I briefed you on this during the work session, and as I did so, I noticed a small error in the resolution. So, during your work break, I ran upstairs and made changes and printed this draft, and I'll point out the change to you when I get to that point. Very briefly, the need for this resolution arises out of the resignation of Ms. Zinni, effective October 8th of 2021, as clerk of council. The resolution before you this evening accomplishes three things. First, it provides for the appointment of Morgan Smith as the interim clerk of council, effective as of October 9th of 2021, and continuing until you appoint a new clerk. Two, it authorizes me to adjust Ms. Smith's salary by an amount equal to 10%, a 10% increase to compensate her for the assumption of these additional duties, in addition to the work she does for us as the assistant in the city manager's office. And three, it authorizes me to appoint individuals other than Ms. Smith to provide support and to clerk for the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and other boards and commissions. Given the demands on Ms. Smith, we believe that it's reasonable to expect her only to support city council in her role as interim clerk, making it necessary for us to identify other members of staff or outside individuals who can support these other boards and commissions. And so, again, with your adoption of the And so again, with your adoption of the resolution, it would authorize me to to designate those individuals as interim or acting clerk for for those other boards and commissions. The the one change to the resolution from what you had in your package is on page one. There are line numbers down the left-hand side. Line thirty provides for Morgan Smith to be appointed by city council as interim clerk of council. The original draft in your package had both the words acting and the word interim. And the correct word in this case is interim. And so I have cleaned this up so that it it now reads as it should for her to be appointed by city council as interim clerk of council. So with that, the resolution is ready for your consideration. I'm pleased to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that council adopt the proposed resolution appointing Morgan C. Smith interim clerk of council for the period stated in the resolution and authorizing the city manager to designate a clerk of council in certain circumstances to serve as clerk to bodies other than council.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second. This is Terry Holmes.
Counselor Holmes has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item C. That was added on to the agenda. A discussion of ordinance amending section two point three zero point zero one zero, Appointment and General Duties of Chapter two point three zero, City Clerk of Title Two Administration of the Stanton City Code Authorizing the City Manager Upon Consultation With the Mayor to Designate an Acting Clerk. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item now on your regular agenda is also ready for council's consideration of an of a proposed ordinance. And Mr. Blair will present this item.
Welcome back, Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and council. Just as discussed at the work session, this is an update to the city code. Currently, if the clerk of council was not available for whatever reason, whether it be health, whether it be a family emergency or whatnot, city code currently would require a meeting of city council, a special meeting of city council to appoint somebody to clerk the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, or another board or commission. The amendment before you would allow the city manager, upon consultation with the mayor, to appoint an acting clerk if the clerk of council is unable to perform clerking duties for a specific board or commission. The reason for the dual nature of the appointment is that, again, the clerk of council is your your appointee as the city council. But given the logistics of this, it is very likely that if the clerk of council called in and said they had a family emergency, the city manager would then work with staff members to find someone available to clerk the meeting that night. And the consultation with the mayor is, again, to make sure that the council has some say in this clerking, in these clerking duties, because, again, the clerk is the council's appointee.
Right, are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor Holmes.
I move that city council adopt a pro- proposed ordinance amending section two point three oh point oh one oh of Stanton City Code to authorize the city manager upon consultation with the mayor to designate an acting clerk.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Claffey has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Dull.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item is item D, which we moved from the work session to the regular meeting agenda. It's a discussion of Stanton City Council Retreat Report. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant City Manager Leslie Beauregard will present this item.
Great. Welcome back to the podium.
You have some visuals for this one, so. Okay, so it's the last meeting. You all approved the minutes of the retreat. And this item tonight is attempting to kind of package those minutes into, for lack of a better word, a strategic plan, an action plan that can be moved forward by staff. So with the help of Michelle Bixler over there, we have come up with something we'd like to show you that we think would package this in a way that's very that would be good for staff and a good way to communicate this out to you and the community. So let me talk a little bit about some of the elements of the retreat that you all talked about. One was the vision. And so that translates very easily into a vision. The second thing was the term that our facilitator called big rocks. And what we have decided, we have, we're suggesting we call those strategic areas. That's really what they are. They're strategic areas. Action items, we're calling actions. And then operating principles slash values, we're suggesting we call values. And we're going to show you what we've done with each of these. And I don't know if you see the little logo at the top with the gear. And our recommendation is to make this a snappy thing and call it stand plan. Okay. And we'll take, obviously, we're interested in your feedback on all this. If you have questions, you can shout it out or wait till the end of the presentation. So with the vision, during the retreat, we talked a lot about different visions. We had quite a bit of discussion over this. The one that kind of stuck out, the one that was prominent, at least in the in the minutes from the retreat, was a culturally rich, historic city with an exciting future of innovation, growth, and resilience. And then the tagline, you belong here. At the end of the presentation, I'm going to ask council, what is the work that still needs to be done? Is this one of the areas that you still do want to work on? And so I'll get your feedback about that at the end. But this is the vision that, at the time of the retreat, people seem to like. But again, we can still have discussions about this. It's in the minutes, it was suggested that councils might still want to work on this a little bit. In terms of the operating principles and values, what we've suggested is you had eleven different areas that you talked about. And what we've done is aligned them to get them down to five values. So you can see the red dots that line up with integrity are politeness, integrity, and trust. With the purple, inclusion and equity, you have respect different opinions and respect diversity. Under excellence, you have fiscal responsibility, environmentally, I'm sorry, and so ongoing education and development. Under engagement, you have open, honest communications, listen, and community engagement. And environmentally conscious, you have environmentally conscious. And it's a lot easier to remember five things than it is to remember eleven things. And so by distilling these down to five areas, it's very easy to remember those, and it's easy to communicate out to the organization and to the community. So in your packet, what this really is, is a spreadsheet. We came up with this idea to help report out on these different areas. And you can see we have the strategic areas. And in this case, this one is infrastructure. Under actions, we came out of the retreat with two actions. One was the use of ARPA funds and other federal state assistance for infrastructure, and then stormwater management. We added some features here. We didn't really talk about these at the retreat, but we thought these would be good for you all to have and for staff to track it this way. Who's accountable for this action? How do we measure it? And a lot of these you'll see to be determined, and that's going to be some discussion with staff. We'd be interested to hear how you would like to measure each of these actions as well. So we'll be seeking some ideas from you all, you know, in any time. An estimated cost and an estimated timeline. And in some cases, for these actions, we determine the timeline in the retreat. In others, we didn't. So the ones we didn't identify as timelines, we're going to have to come back with some recommendations on timelines. So each of the strategic areas has this format in an Excel spreadsheet that we could use as a reporting tool, at least for now, until we maybe come up with something a little bit different. So let me just review quickly each of the strategic areas and the actions. So this is infrastructure. So there are two actions underneath this that I already demonstrated. Use of ARPA funds and other federal state assistance and stormwater management. And at the end of this presentation, I'm actually going to talk to you a little bit about public engagement strategy for ARPA. The next one was economic development, and there were two action items. The corridor overlay over review and economic development incentive philosophy and program. Under responsive efficient government, you have staff training and development and employee democratics reflecting the community they serve. Under the West End, you have small area plan, marketing, and wayfinding signs. And under built environment, we have police department space needs, fire department facility, streetscape plan, schools plus public works facilities, and citywide citywide space needs analysis and plan. Other actions identified during the retreat didn't necessarily fall under strategic area, although I think we could probably pigeonhole them into a strategic area. And these are the ones that I that we identified. One, the first one is hold a pre-budget work session slash mini-retreat in January. The second one is to provide a briefing on potential for developing a regional PSAP. The third is exploring dividing the economic development director from the community development director as separate as part of the upcoming budget. The next one is looking, generally looking at our staffing needs in the next budget cycle. And some of this has to do with the implementation of the plan. If you recall, we talked about that during that time. The next one is include references to Weston and city planning documents, continue to participate in regional transit initiatives, and development adoption of comprehensive rules of procedure for council meetings. As far as implementation goes, we did talk, most of what we talked about during this time was how are we going to do this with the limited staff that we have, looking at our workforce? In Charlottesville, we had the same dilemma, and we developed teams, frankly. And I had a staff team that helped figure out ways to push out council's goals. And so one way we could address this is develop that team in the city that would help that kind of champion each of these strategic areas and start to figure out ways to push those out. And that was really how we got it done. And so that's one way that we could approach that here. In addition to, as the twenty-three budget, kind of looking at our workforce, and maybe we need to do some realignment that we, such that we talked about during the retreat. And in terms of reporting, we talked about a semi-annual reporting on progress of the plan, developing benchmarks and dashboards, which we'd already started to do in the Excel spreadsheet, and then doing an annual retreat to revisit all of this. Okay? And all these are best practices. You know, I don't think I have to tell you that. So that concludes my portion about the retreat itself. So I'd be curious to know what input you have on the plan and what work you all still thinks needs to be done, or if you just give us the green light to start pushing ahead and giving you, you know, and starting to implement some of the plans that I've suggested in here in terms of getting the staff team together, thinking about how we're going to push this out, rolling it out to the organization, rolling it out to the community. And all these things we'll share with you as we go along as well, to get your input as well. So I'll stop there and answer any questions.
All right, Counselor Claffey.
Leslie, when I looked at this on the, I guess, on the agenda, was it page thirty-one? In the strategic areas for the built environment on the streetscape plan. And it talks about staff will update city council on the elements of the plan not yet completed. Those elements included in the current capital improvement plan and the cost of each item included in that, and a rough cost of each element not included. And to me, this is an important thing that we've got to decide. If it's already on our CIP and we've already got funding coming from, like, the road to nowhere. If we've got the funding coming, then we don't want to spend the American Recovery Plan money. But we need to know what's already planned and what's covered financially, and what is a new project. And when I looked at this, the estimated timeline is to be determined, but for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm afraid that's a year away from what I wanted. I wanted it in January of this year. But we we can know as we get the the recovery plan money, what we can start on in twenty-two.
We'll have that for you in weeks, Mr. Claffey.
Good, because this date scares me when I saw fiscal two thousand and twenty-three.
Phil Trayer is working with a group now on assessing.
There there are some projects out there in the streetscape. For instance, sidewalks on on Donaghy Street that, you know, and I know Edgewood is covered.
Well, the street. I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't want to mess with the Edgewood thing because I know that that's already funded. But like, if we do something on Lambert Street or or Donaghy Street, that's not funded. And we need to know, well, can we get that done? How much money is that going to cost us? Can we put it in this year? Do we have to put it in the CIP for two years down the line? But we got to get it formulated.
I think we're talking about two different things. Because in the retreat, the discussion of the streetscape plan focused on a streetscape plan for the Central Business District that was adopted by city council decades ago. And so when that that item that you're reading about has to do with the specific streetscape plan for downtown. It doesn't concern the sorts of other projects that that you're referring to throughout the city. So what we will have for you in a couple of weeks and, you know, in in the next two to four weeks is a review of the streetscape plan for downtown, portions of which are not yet implemented. And you may recall, one area, for example, that has not yet been implemented is Greenville Avenue between New Street and Coulter Street.
Yes.
There, you know, there's no utilities undergrounded. You know, and so that's an example when we talk about the streetscape plan is specific to to downtown. And so that.
I guess what I hear from a lot of people in the city of Stanton is we always worry about downtown. And we got to worry about some of these other areas. And when I asked, what are the plans for running a sidewalk up Donaghy Street?
Edgewood, which is dangerous.
Well, Edgewood's covered. We got Edgewood. We just have to be wait for next year. But how about Lambert Street? And and there's some others, Augusta Street, where the school kids are going to the new high school. You know, we don't have a sidewalk ability to get a child from Donaghy Street to the high school without making them walk down the street.
So what you're talking about will be a part of the ARPA allocation process.
Exactly. And that's what I want to know, how many dollars it's going to be to do some of these projects by January. Because we want to see what we can get rolling next year. And I know some of them are going to say, that one's being covered, and we don't have to worry about that for two years. Or, you know, that one's been funded over here. But I want to know what we can get going as long as we have this recovery plan money coming in for some new fresh projects. But we can't seem to find a name for this new because we haven't, you know, we haven't delineated where this project, the scope of the projects. For instance, a Donaghy Street sidewalk. It's it's nowhere to be found in a city plan. Follow me?
Yeah, so I think there there's an issue then about the need to amend the CIP to include new projects. Because right now.
It's either going to, it's either going to be CIP or it's going to be recovery plan money. And we want to know which one it's going to be.
Well, I I think I think things need to be in the CIP in order to be considered for for ARPA funding. And we can do those. I mean, if you have new projects that aren't in the CIP, I think we want to know that those are on your radar. Because I think that we we would want to bring to you amendments to the CIP so that those projects can be in the mix as we consider the allocation of the ARPA funds to make recommendations to you.
Correct. And that's why we're going to need to know how much money we're talking about per project.
Well, we can't give you that figure until we know what projects you have in mind. So the Donaghy, if the Donaghy Street sidewalk is one example, you know.
I mean, we talked Donaghy Street at the retreat. I mean, we talked Donaghy Street at the retreat. We mentioned that as one of the potential places that we would like to put sidewalks, Lambert Street. And and we have it in our heads, we we mentioned it, but it's not on a CIP. Therefore, it's never been an identified item. And you're not, I I don't think you're getting my point that we got to have somebody from the city analyzing this and saying, all right, if we're going to do this, we got to name the project and we got to find out how much it's going to cost and and what is the best timetable to do so.
Mr. Clappy, may I suggest? So we actually start our CIP process in about a week and a half.
I'm aware it's coming up.
It's coming up. So this is a great, this is a great time to start that, to get that input from you all. So I'll look at the notes again from the retreat. But if I have any questions, I might reach out to you just so I have that information for that meeting so that we can start talking to staff about it. How about that? How's that sound? Okay.
Great, thanks.
Are there any additional questions or comments? What about the vision statement?
Like personally, I like it.
I like it.
Short and sweet, simple.
This is Carol Lindahl. I'd like to point out that Harrisonburg has just revealed their new phrase, which is you belong here.
Oh, you kid.
We had it first.
We had it first.
Unbelievable.
All right. So is that hearing any other comments? So it sounds like you all are pleased with this so far. So we'll start working on kind of rolling this out. And so we'll certainly be in touch soon about kind of how we're going to roll this out next in terms of, and then we're going to come when we start thinking about when we come to you to report in six months for now. So to start that process of reporting out. Okay, does that sound good?
That sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay, one more thing.
Mr. Rosenberg.
I was just going to say, and I don't know if Ms. Beauregard was going to go here. Now, now that we know that you are satisfied with this, we will include it on a subsequent agenda so that you can formally vote on it and adopt it as your own plan.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Is that okay with counsel? Okay, Ms. Beauregard.
All right, one more thing I'd like to talk to you about and get your input on is ARPA, the community engagement piece. So federal guidelines for ARPA states, Treasury urges state territorial local travel and local governments to engage their constituents and communities in developing plans to use these payments. Given the scale of funding, it's potential to catalyze broader economic recovery and rebuilding. There's lots of ways to do this. But one engagement tool that staff's been looking at is called Polco. It is an online community engagement tool for local governments. It includes surveys, engagement platforms and online reporting dashboards. They have a unique ARPA engagement package right now that they have just rolled out. In fact, it's so fresh, I think Loudoun County is the first Virginia locality to sign on. And we're only the second really. Others have looked at it, but we've been talking to them too. But Loudoun County has just signed on for this engagement package. For years one and three, it's 13,500, which includes not just the survey, but all these dashboards I just talked about. And we could use ARPA funds for those, for both of those years. So this proposal would say, let's get the ARPA package now. And then I'm going to talk a minute about what we could purchase for next year. And then in year three, we'd get the ARPA package again. Since we have ARPA as many years, we have until 2024 for the funds to allocate the funds. So that's on the ARPA part. This is just, I gave you some material in your packet, which you probably saw. This is just their little, in their material, and they talk about, you know, assessing community needs. It helps you produce documentation, it helps measure effectiveness, it engages residents and aligns and tracks progress. There's other general uses of of the Polco tool, which includes community-wide surveys or citizen surveys, as they used to be called, employee surveys, which our chief human resources officer has been wanting to do. So this could be something he could use. A business survey and other custom surveys, along with reports. And that annual costs 15,500. I mentioned that Loudoun County is about to get a contract underway for the ARPA engagement package. And for all the products that Polco offers, over 600 communities use it nationwide, including these Virginia clients that are listed here. And I'll just add that when I was in Charlottesville, it wasn't called Polco. It was called the National Citizen Survey. We did that every other year. It is a statistically significant survey sent to a random sampling of just city households. So you get city responses. They can either do a paper copy or they can go online to complete the survey. And then Polco produces all the reports for you. They do all the hard work for you. So as terms of how Polco compares to other services you might want to think about, cost is one thing. And I will say, in Charlottesville, when we looked at other services just for a survey was 30 to $40,000. This gives you a survey plus other reporting benefits. It gives you the expertise because basically they do the work for you and you just, they just give you the results and you get to go and make decisions with it, you know, further engage with it. In Charlottesville, we used it to help develop our budget and to develop our strategic plan. So we shared the results with the community and council. And then, again, we talked about workforce earlier. It's a lot of work to do a survey like this. And if you want to do it right. And so Polco gives you that freedom without having to hire somebody or devote somebody's time significantly to this, to get a good product out of this. So right now, we were, you know, for the immediate future, for the immediate ask, we are looking at using a little bit of our ARPA money to help pay for the engagement piece for ARPA. To do the general package, we would need to put that in the budget for next year. And then we would do the ARPA package for the next year after that. So just wanted to get counsel's thoughts on that and see if you had any questions about this package. Again, I've used it when I was in Charlottesville. Different name for the company, but basically similar product. And we had nothing but good experience with them frankly, and we're very pleased with the results.
Adjust the questions on your surveys and stuff, or is it more like a blank?
Sure, it's fairly turnkey, although you can add a few of your own custom questions, which we did do in Charlottesville. But that is the only thing is that because the survey is goes nationwide to 600 localities, it's basically the same survey. They do offer what they call, I'm looking for the right word. I think it's micro surveys, which you can completely customize. And then they do offer solutions if you want to have a customizable survey. But the community survey, the ARPA survey, the employee survey, those are what they call benchmark surveys. And so they are pretty much standard surveys. They're pretty much all the same.
Saying the two different, there were two different packages.
Right.
Each one of them you'd have to buy separately. So if we took both packages, it'd be 28?
No, so the ARPA package is one complete package. So that would be for one year. The next year, we would propose doing like a community survey or an employee survey, and that's the $15,000 package. And then, so it's just the one package a year. You don't need to buy more than one package.
That was Counselor Holmes that asked the questions. Did any, oh, no, you're fine. Did anyone else have any questions?
Do we have any other outfits to compare against?
Probably not for the ARPA survey. And I can tell you, I mean, we can certainly look into that. When I did that same work in Charlottesville, there there was really no comparison in terms of the cost. But if if.
Well, Charlottesville is going to have significantly higher population, so therefore.
Well, see, it's it's statistical. So it's the same number of surveys that go out no matter what. They're just trying to get a sampling. So it was, so when we did the analysis, we were actually able to sole source this in Charlottesville because it was so unique in terms of the features that it offered. In this case, Newport News has a contract that we could share with. They're using the whole package of Polco, but they were listed on the site earlier. So we could actually kind of partner in with that contract. But, you know, we can.
So we can do that.
We can do that, yeah.
Well, you know, the last time we did a citizen survey, they all said recycling was our problem. And that was the, I reread that citizen survey the other day. And everybody was complaining about not being able to recycle plastics. Well, now that we're recycling plastics, everybody's number one complaint is going to be recycling. Because we can't recycle fast enough, you know. We're, we've solved the problem where we're, we're recycling plastics. But we're, we got a myriad of other problems that go along with it. So I mean, unless you really tailor these questions to the specific Stanton issues, you're going to get recycling's bad, recycling's bad. And it's just going to, every year, it's going to be recycling's bad. But I know for a fact that we've changed the dynamics.
It looks like it covers a lot of different, I mean, areas as far as health, environment, community design, economics. It looks like it's going to ask you questions on everything. So, you know, maybe maybe about recycling might come up under safety or something. But but it's going to, it's going to give you information on other things that we possibly could use as to make our decisions.
You're absolutely right. It does, it does seek input on a wide swath. I mean, every city service, which is really beneficial. And also, you know, you'll know that it's going just to Stanton households. I think, I'm not sure, I think that survey in 2019, I think people could just complete it online. So it wasn't like it was a sampling. It wasn't random and it wasn't a sampling. So you know, in this case, you're going to get a random sampling of just City of Stanton households because they'll work with us to GIS map where they're going to mail postcards, for instance, to ask people to complete the survey. So that's another benefit that you're going to receive by doing a survey like this.
And you also said that it would go out to employees. So it would, it would maybe gauge, you know, the maybe how our employees feel about their jobs.
Yeah, and I know Mr. Ben has been wanting to do an employee survey. And so this could be certainly a benefit for the organization to have an employee. And to continue to do that maybe every other year or something, you know, to then start getting some trend lines.
Well, you get better answers from somebody when they know that their name's not going to be attached to it.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Good point.
All right. Any additional comments? Do you have anything else for us?
I don't have anything else for you. You know, in terms of this, I just wanted to kind of see if you all are interested in this. I mean, again, the package we're proposing to do now is just the ARPA package to get the input on the ARPA funds. We, you know, and if we do that and then you all decide, no, this is not useful, then, or maybe the process wasn't exactly the way you thought it was going to go, we can readjust after that. So, and again, we can use ARPA funds for the first year that we're proposing to do this.
What is counsel's pleasure? Do you support this?
Friend of me.
Counselor Meade.
I think anything we can do to get better, more reliable feedback from citizens, we should do. It doesn't mean we have to make a 20-year commitment to spend that money every year, but this would be a good start. And and it would, and it recognizes the fact that that statistical surveys require some expertise and and that it's cheaper in the long run and more efficient in the long run to hire people who have that expertise than to try and make do with folks that we have.
Why did you say a normal survey cost us?
So I know an employee survey, for instance, and talking to Mr. Ben, would run around 30 to 35,000 just for the survey. And when we looked at just doing community-wide surveys that were random samples, and it was around the same cost. And you just got the survey. And with this, you get a little bit more, you get some of these other features that go along with that.
Everyone else? Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, all right, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is matters from the city manager. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing for counsel this evening.
So the next item is matters from the public. Matters from the public. This part of the city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. One, please come to the podium or begin your call. Identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium or to end your call. If you continue to speak after I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will again ask you to please stop speaking and step away from the podium or end your call. If you still continue to speak, I will ask the clerk of council to end your call. And if you continue to speak from the podium, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section 18.2-415A2. Number two, this is a time for us as councils simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give-and-take debate. If you are seeking information, you may mention it during your remarks and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in days ahead. Three, we ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to an individual employee of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, mail or email. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. Using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their official duties on behalf of the City of Stanton and doing something that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask that you withdraw from the podium or to end your call. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond. So we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our clerk of council, Ms. Zinni. And now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public as well as remote participation using the Zoom platform. And as mentioned, when you come to the podium, please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to speak. I will start with the audience that's here in person in the chambers, and then we'll go to the Zoom callers and back and forth. So the podium is now available. Welcome. Start? By all means.
Yeah, good evening.
Name and address.
My name is Seesun Bay. I am originally from South Korea and I am now an American citizen living in Fairfax County. For cultural reasons, Chinese people believe that a person's body should remain intact after a death. As a result, people in China rarely donate their organs. Yet suddenly, in the early 2000s, Chinese hospitals began advertising short wait times for organ transplants. Where did all these human organs come from? Extensive and credible reports have revealed that the Chinese Communist Party CCP has been killing prisoners of conscience, most of them Falun Gong practitioners, in order to sell their organs. A prominent international human rights organization recently stated, first organ harvesting has been committed for years throughout China on a significant scale. And Falun Gong practitioners have been one and probably the main source of organ supply. You may find additional documentation in the handouts we provided. China has become a major international center for organ transplants, and many American patients travel there for this purpose. A northern Brazilian resident recently received an offer from China of a kidney transplant for $50,000. And an Oregon, Orange County resident told us that she had traveled to China to receive an organ transplant. This issue should concern us here in Stanton because members of our community who need an organ might consider traveling to China for a transplant. Here in the U.S., the wait time for matching kidney or liver can take several years. But in China, they can supply a match in a matter of weeks. Can you imagine finding out after the fact that your new organ was taken from? from a person who had been imprisoned for his religious beliefs and then executed so the CCP could sell you his organ? You may be wondering why you have not heard more about the horrors of live, live organ harvesting in China. This is primarily due to the Chinese regime's extensive influence operations over media companies throughout the world, and its tight control over the flow of information into and out of China. For example, have you ever seen the special insert called China Watch? That is include, include in the Wall Street Journal and the Washington Post. This section is written by the CCP, which pays millions of dollars to these two newspapers. So U.S. policymakers and the business leaders will read communist propaganda disguised as news reporting. I am here today to ask the Stanton City Council to pass a resolution to condemn the practice of live organ harvesting and to alert our residents and our medical professionals about this issue so they may make an informed decision before traveling to China for an organ transplant. This action will save lives as good residents and bring the light, the hidden atrocities committed by the Chinese Communist regime. Thank you.
Thank you. 31 on Zoom.
I do have someone with their hand raised.
All right.
Caller, if you could please announce who you are and where you reside.
Sure, Allison Profeta on Farrar Court in Stanton. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm calling to comment on the discussion council had earlier this evening about appointing members to the Equity Committee that's being formed for our city. I was disheartened that nobody spoke publicly or acknowledged that you are a council made up of seven privileged white people talking about how to create an equity committee. Ultimately, it was decided that the nominations committee would be choosing members. A nominations committee made up of three white people, two men and one woman. And those racial and gender statistics track, and let me tell you why. None of you mentioned this evening asking for a breakdown of who currently sits on Stanton's boards and commissions. I've spent the last almost year and a half observing them. And several weeks ago, I broke down the racial and gender makeup of boards and commissions in Stanton. I implore you to ask city staff to do the same because I'll admit I could be wrong, and I would love another pair of eyes on it, especially if there's been some kind of seismic shift in equity here in Stanton since I did this breakdown. But according to my calculations, your boards and commission members are 67% men, only 33% women, and only 4% people of color. And that 4% is me being generous because the city's Director of Community and Economic Development is a black man who has to, as part of his job, sit on one of the state boards. So a different employee would have meant one less person of color on your boards and commissions. You're setting up the Equity Committee to be ineffective if you do not make room at the table and hand over the mic to members of marginalized communities to decide how this committee is shaped. Mayor Oaks maintained that the nominations committee should make the decision because that's how it's always been done. And I urge all of you to please think about this. Doing things the way they've always been done is literally why an Equity Committee is so badly needed. A member of Stanton NAACP, a member of the Stanton Equity Committee who presented to council on these very issues, a resident of Valley Mission or Public Housing, a student at VSDB. There are amazing people over at the LGBTQ Center, including a trans activist who sits on a state board. These are the people who should be shaping the Equity Committee, not city council. You should be listening to their recommendations after sitting back and watching them interview potential members. You'd still have the final vote. But all seven of you should take a moment and seize this one moment to not center yourselves and instead center the communities that you're claiming you want to hear from. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience?
Thank you, Allison, well said.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name and your address. And you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tany Tang. I'm originally from China, and I'm now a U.S. citizen living in Fairfax County. I would like to offer additional comments on forced organ harvesting in China. Falun Gong is a spiritual practice involving gentle exercises, meditation, and the virtues of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. It was introduced to the public in 1992 and quickly gained popularity because of its many health and wellness benefits. By 1999, almost 100 million people were practicing Falun Gong in China alone. Because of Falun Gong's immense popularity and its emphasis on spirituality, the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, considered it a threat. As a result, the head of the CCP launched the prosecution of Falun Gong in July 1999. Countless practitioners have been tortured, killed, or disappeared to this day. Shortly after the prosecution began, the number of organs available for transplant suddenly skyrocketed in China. Standing beside me is Chun Yin Wan, a Beijing resident, and a survivor of the CCP's persecution. She spent almost six years in prison for telling people about Falun Gong, suffer all kinds of tortures. During her imprisonment, Mrs. Wan was forced to do slave labor for up to 18 hours a day. She found the craft in Walmart here what she made in China. While she was in prison, Mrs. Wan was also blood tested along with the other Falun Gong practitioners. This is one of the tests used to determine the organ compatibility. The Chinese regime considered her not only a source of slave labor, but also a source of organs for potential transplants. So far this year, a total of 20 local government in Beijing, including Green, Louise, and Caroline, passed a resolution to educate the residents about this practice. And today, I ask you to do the same. Please introduce and pass a resolution to raise awareness of this issue. We are submitting petitions from around 100 local residents in support of this request. To our shock, when we collect signature, most of them don't know this at all. We are requesting this resolution not to involve a city government in foreign affairs, but rather to benefit the health and well-being of Stanton residents who may one day find that they or a member, family member, will need an organ transplant and find themselves at the bottom of a list whose wait times are measured in years. You are at the level of government that's closest to the people. I can speak out as an individual citizen, but I'm asking you to join your voice with mine because our voices are louder together. The resolution will help prevent our local citizens from becoming the unwitting accomplices to the murder of innocent people. It will also help educate our residents that the Chinese people and the Chinese Communist Party are not one and the same. We would appreciate the opportunity to meet you in pressing to provide additional information and discuss this resolution. Thank you for your support of human rights and religious liberty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any?
I do not have anyone on Zoom with their hands raised.
Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to address the council? Hello, Mr. Fawcett, so nice to see you.
My name is Albino Albert Fawcett. I live at 401 Bowling Street. I came, come to you tonight because I have a few words of wisdom for you all. First of all, silence, oh, silence is golden, but not in a democracy, but not in a democracy. You're silent, and you listen carefully. But listening, by listening, you can learn only 12% of what is said. By seeing and participating, you can learn 45% of what the situation is. There's quite a difference there. Every act, for every action, there is a reaction. I'm waiting for a reaction from the council. Nothing means anything until you put a number to it. They talked about different grants, but there were very few numbers. You need to put a liaison council member sitting in on every department meeting so that you all know what's going on. Out of confusion, there usually is understanding. You have to have confusion, and after confusion, you talk it all out and so forth. You illustrate everything, and then you have understanding. The Gospel says, according to St. John 8:32, "You shall know the truth, and the truth will make you free." Too many people don't want to know the truth. People go to the courtroom, they lie, they deceive, and so forth. Even the judge doesn't want to know the truth. All he wants to do is get out. Field Marshal Rommel said, "The world is full of answers waiting for the right question." Money talks and anything else walks. Quiet people are welcome everywhere. An expert is an unknown squirt. My life revolves around perseverance, persistence, and patience, and I usually never give up. I have integrity. Hopefully, this council will have the same. I tried getting an appointment with the Appeals Board in February. I never got a response until the end of May. And they come, their meeting they gave me conflicted with another meeting. I gave them seven days' notice that I could not make that meeting. Still, they said, "Well, we're not going to give you another opportunity." That's not right. That's out of order. And a second thing, when you are gonna make another commission, hopefully, you'll give them the same options that you give to the Appeals Board. Because the commission is just another word of you passing the buck on to somebody else. You people are the government of the people, by the people, and for the people in Stanton. Each and every one of you have responsibilities. Sometimes they're tough, and I, I have to commend you for taking certain stance. But you have to do your job because that's your job, and don't pass it on to somebody else. And one other thing I have to tell you, I have no animosity to anybody or anyone. I want you all to understand that. I have to do what I have to do. The only option I've gone through all of the channels, and the only option I have is picketing. I don't like to picket, but I have no choice. I hope you all understand my position because that's where I come from. Thank you. You have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett.
Anyone on Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
Thank you. Mr. Jennings?
Yes, my name is Bowen Jennings, 332 Sherene, Stanton. What I want to bring up is a safety hazard that we have out in the park beside the grand, the bandstand. Bandstand has a light out on the right side of the bandstand. The light is been out, have been only quite a while. And that particular area out there is rough terrain and everything. Well, I'm, well, I mean, it's not real, real smooth. And it's been several people who tripped and fell over because they can't see. So I want the council for somebody to get it there and get, get that light taken care of. It's been, been out for, well, I hadn't checked it in the past couple of weeks, but I know it's been out for quite a while. Thank you much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else on Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
Anyone else from the audience? Welcome.
Yvonne Wilson, 2017 First Street. I'm gonna do something a little different because these three ladies, you're South Korean national, and both of you are Chinese. I know about your Falun Gong struggle. I was actually part of the protest in 2003 in DC. We've known about the organ harvesting. We also know about the enforced sterilizations, vaccinations, and things of that nature that has taken place in the CCP. Am I correct about that? That they enforce medical decisions? For those who can't see, they have assented their yes. Now, now that I made that establishment, we're talking about diversity and choice. This is diversity. Diversity of thought is more important than diversity in physical attributes. We have someone in this audience who was a six-year prisoner under the CCP due to a religious choice. Falun Gong practitioners aren't the only ones that are getting their organs harvested. Christians, Tao Buddhists, Catholics, the Uighurs. If you want to know why people are not keen on making a choice or having a mandate on vaccines, you've got three reasons sitting right there. The result of a slippery slope. And I do not mean to put you on the spot, but you traveled from Fairfax County to tell us the results of what happens when things are mandated. That's the reason why people do not like the idea of being told or being treated differently because they choose not to get a vaccine. Not to mention, you know, a lot of us African Americans are losing our pensions because we decide that we don't want to do that either. We don't exactly have a cozy history with the CDC. I'm not gonna bring up all the experiments that have been done on African Americans in the past in the name of science, but you know what they are. But that was years ago. We're talking about now. We've got three people now that have come from countries that started that little slippery slope of guilt-tripping people into taking a vaccine. People who can't work because they didn't do what the CCP didn't want them to do. It's happening here. There are jobs that I know that I'm qualified for, but the first thing they ask is if I'm vaccinated or how I feel. It shouldn't be none of their business. We have people in this country that are deciding on whether to have a livelihood. and go with the mandate or not. Yes, I understand that the beds are full. Yes, I understand that there are cases out there that are filling up beds. But what you are doing by guilt-tripping people into making a personal medical choice, you get that. This is a very slippery slope, slope. Very slippery. And since scripture was used in order to justify convincing and encouraging people to take the vaccine, I'm also going to use scripture to justify free will. Romans 3:8. Not the exact quote, but it basically says, "And who are we that we say we do evil for the result of good?" That's a warning against the greater good. It's not a perfect quote. I don't have it memorized. If you want to fact-check it, fine, but it pretty much says that. So I want people to really think about the result of what a greater good does. You have your result of a greater good sitting right in this audience. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
All right. One last time, any callers on Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
All righty. With that, Ms. Mayor of the City of Stanton, Virginia, I now declare the September 23rd, 2021, regular meeting adjourned.